Okay. This meeting of the Planning Board of the City of Elizabeth is now called to order. The meeting of the Planning Board of the City of Elizabeth convenes Thursday, the 6th of November in the year 2012, as a duly advertised conference with provisions of the Office of Public Affairs Act NJ, Article 100486, as a specialist schedule meeting published upon the annual meeting schedule notice on this meeting as of 1st of Star Ledger Friday, January 27, 2012. The notice has been case to be heard from both Star Ledger and at least 10 days before today. Martin, move your role.
Councilman Goldman?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Carvalho?
Here.
Commissioner Cavani? Commissioner Malich?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Secretary Irving?
Here.
Commissioner Chauvin?
Here.
Commissioner Uden?
Here.
Vice Chairman Ross? Chairman Ha?
Here for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, this is my act, United States of America, and to the Republic of the States, by obligation, under our individual liberty and justice law. Before we begin the meeting tonight, I just want to call everyone's attention and offer condolences to our committee person, Charlotte Brown. Charlotte, unfortunately, lost her sister about three weeks ago when another passed away Thanksgiving, so she's not with us tonight, but our thoughts are with her. I did represent us in this. The notice was very short, but it was a Thanksgiving holiday, and I did tend to wave on behalf of our condolences, so hopefully, in the future, she will only know good things and have great memories of her mom and her sister. First order of business tonight is to adopt the minutes of the last meeting, meeting of October 4th. As you all know, there was no meeting in November. An unwelcome visitor called Sandy. May I have motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve, yes.
Motion by Commissioner Carvalho. Second, second by Commissioner Miss, Martin, go.
Councilman Goldman?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Carvalho?
Aye.
Commissioner Malich?
Abstain.
Secretary Irving?
Abstain.
Commissioner Chauvin?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Ha?
Yes. First order of business is, the second order of business to say is the minutes is to approve a resolution. We will have in front of you a resolution, B1012, 620 Foot Bailey Avenue, which was approved on November 4th, 2012. The approval was a denial, so when you're voting, the yes votes to affirm, the denial of this application. Do I have a motion?
I'm sorry, do you ask the proceedings?
That was denied.
All curbs.
It was unanimous vote of denial. Yeah. Those who were here were Commissioner Newman, Gonzalez, Carvalho, Chauvin, Ross, myself, and Councilman Goldman. So we were all able to vote, and as I said, a yes vote is to affirm the denial. I have a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve, first, the motion.
Commissioner Carvalho?
Second.
Second, Councilman Goldman, Martin, go.
Councilman Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Carvalho?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Uden?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ross? Chairman Ha?
Yes. There's also a resolution that's not on the agenda, but I guess are turning to meet it into the record. You all have a copy of this in front of you, and then we'll take a vote on it.
Resolution, City of Elizabeth Planning Board Tribute to Thomas Callanan. Whereas Thomas Callanan has devoted over 20 years of public service to the community of the City of Elizabeth, serving as class four member of the Planning Board of the City. And whereas during that time of service, Mr. Callanan dedicated himself to the thorough consideration review of many complex applications brought before the Planning Board of the City of Elizabeth. And whereas in that effort, Mr. Callanan played a vital role in the leadership of the Planning Board through the redevelopment of such projects as the IKEA Center, the Jersey Gardens Mall, and related redevelopment of the Patkaski Road area, as well as overseeing applications involving over 50,000, numerous other neighborhoods in the City of Elizabeth. And whereas in these efforts, Mr. Callanan consistently demonstrated thoughtful and serious consideration of matters presented before the Board, and was careful and thoughtful in his deliberations. And whereas Mr. Callanan's service throughout his tenure as a member of the Planning Board was marked by his softness and dedication to what he thought was in the best long-term interest of the people of the City of Elizabeth. Now therefore, being resolved by the Planning Board of the City of Elizabeth, that it wishes to commend, acknowledge, and celebrate the tenured service of Thomas Callanan as a member of the Planning Board of the City of Elizabeth. Now therefore, be it further resolved, the Planning Board hereby unanimously memorializes this resolution on December 6, 2012, to publicly acknowledge and thank Thomas Callanan for his many years of public service and to wish him and his family well in the future. Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chairman Ross, seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez, and with a heavy argument for the vote.
Councilman Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Carvalho?
Yes.
Commissioner Malich?
Aye.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Secretary Irving?
Aye.
Commissioner Chauvin?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ross?
Aye.
Chairman Ha?
Aye. And the resolution will be presented to Mr. Callanan at the reorganization meeting later in December. Okay. First order of business, developmental review hearing, key 1312, 800 Division, 824 East Grand Street, and 801 A71 Livingston Street, East Grand Division LLC, as amended, this price.
We make everyone welcome back, and third time, hopefully, charm. We're here this evening because of, well, not happened, did happen. We had some financing issues, which has created a need for us to separate our project into an absolute phase process, with the Phase One, Phase Two, and we're seeking the amended preliminary ad file, Phase One, to allow the supermarket, the retail, and the bank to go forward.
I'm sorry, Councilor, when you talk, I wait.
I'm just trying to look at everyone. Okay. All right. Okay. To allow the supermarket, the bank, and the retail to go forward, that would mean that we would not be proceeding at this time of the previously seen service station and the restaurant and drive-through that the Board saw end of September and approved. We would be deleting line 429 from the proposal. I have our state witnesses here this evening. I filed the amended application in October. We have, in the meantime, also met with Harvard Consultants to review everything. All of the original conditions remain in place. We believe that we have, in fact, addressed many and not all of those conditions from your previous approval. And Mr. Jaworski, Mr. Ross, and Mr. Teller are here to memorialize what has shown in the amended plans. I think, if anything, the Board's concerns, which may have existed regarding some of the uses relative to the service station and the restaurant, now go away, as we're simply dealing with the other uses of the non-triangular portion of the property. So I'm happy to proceed with those witnesses, Mr. Chairman, at this time, relative to the plans that were filed. Okay. Want us to run them through them together, or in the tutorial? Okay. All right. So Mr. Jaworski.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to recall, so I thought we previously approved this, though. And they were just supposed to come back for the gas station.
As Councilors explained, the circumstances have changed with regard to project financing and related transaction issues, so they're only able to proceed with this particular aspect of the application, and there are certain revisions that have been made since the original concept layout that was presented to the Board as a result of their compliance with the initial comments from the Board of Harvard Consultants.
So that's why Phase One, Phase Two, coming?
That's why it's now being maybe up, yes.
There's some changes. There are changes, that's why it's amended. Besides that piece that's not being done, there is, we'll see some changes to the plan as was presented to us last. Could you raise your i-p's, Michael, by your name in this place? You both do sound like square. Any testimony you give tonight?
Yes, sir.
Michael, just state your name and address, please.
Michael Sheta, Harvard Consultants, 320 Lloyd Avenue, Queens, Cracker, New Jersey, O.S.
Your name and address, sir.
Joseph Jaworski, JAW, O.R.S.K.I., 245 A.T. Chester, New Jersey.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jaworski was previously qualified in connection with this application. Is that correct? Okay.
No, thank you.
Good. Mr. Jaworski, you've filed a plan that are before the Board to see any connection with the amended application for Phase One, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And the plan that is on the easel is the representation, color render, of what the Board previously saw and approved back in September, is that correct?
That's correct. Was that previously marked in that record? Is there an exhibit mark on it?
This one does not have an exhibit mark on it. It is the same plan.
Well, it's marked as exhibit one, then.
Okay. A1?
A1 is one.
And just for the record, it's a colored site plan rendering of the site plan submitted dated 9/11/2012.
And that plan, Mr. Jaworski, shows both lots 429 and lots 1123, and consists of all of the uses, specifically the supermarket, use the freestanding retail, the freestanding bank, the service station with convenience, and the restaurant and drive-through, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So in the interim, from the Board's approval in September to the present date, the applicant has become unable to proceed with financing for the triangular portion of the property where previously proposed restaurant and gas stations was shown, correct?
That's correct.
So do you agree with you color rendering of the site plan that was filed back in October 16?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that is A2.
Mark, this is A2, and this is also titled Site Plan Rendering, and is based on the latest site plan revised 10/10/2012.
Okay, so can you explain to the Board and members of the public the changes that are depicted on that plan from that which has been shown in the approved resolution now October 12?
Sure. The big difference, as was explained, I'll just refer back to A1. The previously approved project included the entire triangular piece, which is bound by East Grand at the top, Livingston on the left side, or Nangle on Division Street on the right side. The smaller triangle, which is in the northeast corner, which was a separate lot, has now been taken off. That would be part of Phase Two. So Phase One is really just the bottom half, as I refer to A2 now, the bottom half of the development, and you can see the triangle top, which is much white. That was where the gas station and the restaurant were proposed. So really, it was just breaking the project into two, so the bottom half would be Phase One, and then eventually, the Phase Two, if the financing works out, will be incorporated into the overall project. As you can see between A1 and A2, the bottom half is almost identical. The supermarket is in the same location, the retail along Livingston, and the bank up in the northern corner. So the general layout is almost identical. We were able to reconfigure the parking a little bit to make it more efficient in the area, but the buildings themselves are in the same location. We did cut back the supermarket space on the eastern side to allow for some more green area, as well as for utilities to go through that area and get out to Division Street. So as far as numbers, the original plan with the triangle corner was a total of 5.7 acres. Phase One, which is the lower half, is 4.05 acres. The total square footage, again, the supermarket, retail, and bank are basically the same square footage. By eliminating the convenience store and the restaurant, we went from 62,669 square feet to this plan, which is 55,463 square feet. So obviously, you're reducing the square footage based on the Phase Two building is not being incorporated into this plan. And similarly, the parking, which was reduced, obviously, eliminating parking spaces up in the northeast corner, the total parking now is 214 spaces, where 185 spaces is required based on the ordinance, so one space with 300 square feet. So the parking does meet their ordinance, and the circulation, the aisles are basically the same as it was in the last presentation of the whole site. The access to the property, again, really stayed the same. The only change was, if you remember, the elimination, there wasn't an additional driveway up on East Grand, and there was another driveway on Division. We did have some discussions before last time about the gas station use and potential problems with that other extra driveway on Division. We were going to go back and relook at that. Certainly, we will do that in Phase Two, but for this phase of the project, those are eliminated, so we end up with a one-way driveway on East Grand, which is full access. Two driveways on Livingston that'll serve the front parking areas, and then there is a one-way driveway in and a one-way out, which would serve for the truck, for the supermarket loading, so that would strictly be for the loading area for the bag, and that's exactly as it was under the original application.
And it's my understanding that the only deviation that the plan requires is in a single location, the continued request for the minimal area setback from the parking to the right way.
Right. The design waiver we continue to ask for is the minimum separation of 10 feet from the parking space to a right way. If you remember, we did have parking spaces a little bit closer to the right way, Livingston. We were able to eliminate that and put some green area there. Up along East Grand, still maintain that, about 2 to 3 feet there with the template required. It's just in that one spot. The rest of the area is due to meet the ordinance, so technically, that design waiver, which was random, will continue with this application.
And other than that, the plan is fully compliant with the ordinance, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And with regard to the conditions that I referenced earlier, and the conditions that the Board reviewed, and those that were referenced in Harvard Consultants' report, you had an opportunity to meet subsequent to the Board's October approval. Was there anything that you found all problematic or unable to satisfy in any of those conditions with regard to what is shown as Phase One?
No. We did meet with Harvard Consultants, went through the review letter, and the financial plans will address all of those items.
Sorry, the final?
The final engineered plans will address all of those items, and we don't have a problem doing that. And all of the conditions that were associated with the original application that applied to this one, we will comply with.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Jaworski?
Excuse me. The size of the supermarket still going to be what?
The actual size of the supermarket is 25,000.
25,000. What, initially, 30,000?
It was initially 30.
Okay. And is it still going to be key food?
I believe, yes, it is. Yes, it is.
So it's going to be, you went from 30,000 to 25,000 square feet?
Correct.
And this is Phase One, and the retail operation will remain the same size?
The retail, right, there is a small retail.
Yeah, and several.
The several retail is about 20,000 square feet.
That is the same as what?
It was about 19,500 before, very close.
Close to 10,000.
Yes.
And the ingress and egresses will be the same way, excluding the far triangle? What's going to, who's going to maintain that until we have Phase Two? Will that be maintained?
Well, this is a current operation now. Regional Industries is currently operating, so that'll stay that way until it is acquired.
So as far as I was saying, keep it clean, keep it, you know, so nothing overgrown, grass, things that I mentioned, people will be responsible for that.
Yes. Right along this borderline, we do have a buffer strip, and we will maintain that until Phase Two comes.
Is that right, you, Councilor?
I can't see it, but I'm looking at it on the schematic either, I can.
We were talking right here versus the lights.
Correct. I'm looking at the same thing on the schematic, right. How much will, say, the portion on the top?
Well, basically, this would be Phase Two, so Phase One will be developed, and we do have a buffer strip along that northeast property line, so that will be maintained until Phase Two comes into play, and then we will have a connecting driveway, like we had shown on the original.
Just explain to me, maybe one, two questions. One is, there's no way possible that you can keep any rest up on the, on that one road, please.
It's going?
Along here?
It's going?
Uh, there's really not enough room to do it, maintaining supermarket size, and we felt that with the two driveways, as well as one, that, and especially because we do have a separate driveway and loading areas, we're really not mixing that traffic.
I have a question, too. The other part, particularly, who's, that was the original plan, that's now out of the way?
No, that was not, Mr. Chairman, that was, that was also, I know it's red, but it was not according to that.
So who's maintaining that?
Whoever the current owner is, I know.
The garage, the garage there?
Right. I know that the developer did try to require that, but it just didn't work out, so that will maintain the separate lot and on the line where it wants to happen.
Supermarket got smaller, but the retail associated with the supermarket had bigger?
Slightly. The retail is 7,600, and the supermarket's about 25,000. And again, that's just the economics of the deal.
Could you explain?
Correct.
I just had one comment, I don't know whether the rest of you are not, I, I can't. As, sorry. As I was looking at the plans early today, I noticed that on the light lane, there are no lights on the sides of the building facing Division Street, that little piece that's right up against the curb, not the loading area, but the little piece sticking out, and there wasn't no lights, just the back of that retail building on Livingston. And I was strongly urged that there be some kind of wall pack, but there is some light now, and those big building walls will make it very hard.
Yes, absolutely. We actually did discuss that with the Secretary Nager. It did make it to that final plan, but we will agree to that.
Well, it's, it would be in the resolution.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, and as much as I want a supermarket there, and trust me, since I've been acting for a long time, I'm just concerned about having a way to get in, I don't know if that's the side of the building. Yeah, I'm just concerned by that, I mean, if you get in the driveway, get in there, anyway, if the fire engine, fire engine come in, how do they go in, do they go all the way off Livingston, Livingston?
Right. We did actually thick the Nager's folks, the Fire official, after we met, to review the plan, and he was okay with the plan, and the main concern was being able to get in, in that front driveway. He did talk about maybe opening this radius up, and maybe striking some spaces in this location so that they can make that turn. Fig was going to get the truck turning, fire truck turning template, so that we can adjust that. But as far as fighting the fire, having access to the three sides, in essence, was adequate, and he did speak with them, and we went all that way.
The fire officers came and went?
Yes.
Mr. Jaworski, if you answer questions better than an architect, this building will be fully sprinkler to meet all the markets for the international fire code.
That would forget.
Is it possible? Wait for your architect. The other question they had was more on traffic control. I know that on the asphalt, you have stamped "Do Not Enter" where the truck traffic will exit, but I didn't see any picture of any, you know, signs for "Do Not Enter," so if someone's driving by, evening, bad weather, whatever, they're not going to see "Do Not Enter" on the asphalt.
Yes, there definitely won't be signs accompanying that, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have.
Commissioner Carvalho?
Secretary Irving, December, will it be used for regional?
It is continuing to be used for regional fires.
Does that mean, we're going to be installing fences? Does that mean no one has installed fencing and screening so that people shopping don't have to deal with regional businesses?
Yes. Right. That was the reason, sort of just shifting it back and getting that people to work, to be able to, to landscape the fencing.
So if I remember from the plans that I live at today, I didn't see any fencing, or did I miss?
No, it's not on there now. That was one of the items in the Secretary Nager's letter, and we will make sure that this, the Nager's, gets the right kind of fencing.
My other concern was what we spoke about last time, the shopping carts. I'd like that to be put into the resolution, that we either go have any embedded bars installed, and they also need to follow surveillance, and have no registers, so that they don't pollute town.
Yes, that's a critical point.
And also, we had a drop off since, that's also one of the conditions of the last resolution, that.
They're not being?
Not being installed.
That's also.
The application is not sequentially from any of the conditions of what's in that are in the initial resolution of approval, so we both aren't.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Solomon.
Trace your i-p's, square, and definitely give tonight, give the title, and nothing else. Name your question.
J.
Spell your name.
Spell your name.
J.A.Y., T.U.L.L.U.R.
Okay.
2001 Marcus Avenue, Lake Success, New York.
Mr. Tuller, all of your qualifications are in effect and valid since you left here.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. For, you said that on the, these as well?
We'll mark it two boards, sir.
Two boards.
We'll mark those A3 and A4, please, and identify them for reference.
Uh, drawing number, exhibit number A3 is drawing number EL1 dated 10/15/2012. Exhibit A4, drawing number EL2 dated 10/15/2012.
Joe, you heard Mr. Jaworski's testimony and you were here providing testimony in September relative to the overall site plan, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you supply amended architectural rules for this phase one, correct?
That's correct.
And in connection with the, your appearance in September, the board made certain requests regarding modification of their area of the building in the loading area, which is actually part of the street state. Do you recall that request?
Yes, the request was to enhance the facade and loading area on the supermarket building which faces Division Street. And what we have done is added some spandrel glass and warnings to dress up that facade in accordance with the board request.
And other than that addition, do your allegations remain consistent with that much of the show in September?
The only change that we made in these drawings, the final plans will have any modifications to the size or dimension of the building as indicated on the site plans presented by Joe Jaworski.
And did you hear the question concerning fire prevention sprinkler?
Uh, the supermarket building and the retail building will be sprinkler in the necessary fire areas in accordance with the code.
Does that answer my question?
Still not agreeing, counsel, that was a new one.
And with regard to the issues that have been raised in Harvard Consultants' report, specifically with the request for the screening of any of the utility equipment and/or the mechanical equipment, all of that is in fact feasible and subject to your, uh, architectural, architectural, any rooftop equipment
that's visible from the street areas will be screened appropriately so they're not visible from those areas. Any utilities that are mounted outside of the building will be screened appropriately so they're not visible or located within the building so that they are not visible at all.
To the best of your knowledge, are there any architectural issues that remain outstanding and undressed regarding?
No, the plans that were presented by Joe Jaworski are actively represented here in the architecture of the building. Like I said, the only change that we made was the addition of the spandrel glass and the adjustment to Division Street elevation at the loading dock.
And that area is in fact screened as well, correct?
The loading area is screened with the masonry floor. That's this wall over here, that's in front of the actual loading building.
So there's no change to that because I'm concerned with the specific concerns of the board in September?
Correct, no change to that, that remains the same.
Commissioners, any questions for this witness? Seem none, that's what's going to happen next.
Uh, I can have Mr. Ross with me if there are any specific questions concerning the project, but that's, that's developed.
No, he just does his thing.
Yes, certainly, it's Robert Ross, please, Victor O.L.O.S.I.F.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Ross? Seem none, is there anyone in the audience who has any questions regarding this application? So please come forward.
Counselor, was this person, yes?
Yes, it is a person. Seem none, commissioners, what's your pleasure? Motion to approve, seconded by Secretary Urban, seconded by Commissioner Allen.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Commissioner Crumel.
Aye.
Commissioner Crumel.
Aye.
Commissioner Melch.
Aye.
Secretary Urban. Vice President. Commissioner Melch.
Aye.
Stand, say the vote. The vote, the vote. Can you hear it?
Commissioner Ness.
Uh, the next hearing tonight is, um. Thank you, Happy Holidays. Don't see that as a negative, this is phase two. Um, P11 dash, I'm sorry. Uh, direct street redevelopment plan, revised plan and intermed and supersede previously granted approval in April 12, 2005 in the R.C. National Commercial Zone. I'm going to turn on the listed spread and raise attention.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, I have to excuse myself because I have conflict. Uh, Mr. Brown, who's starting the board, is a conflict counsel, will handle the rest of the meeting. I want to thank everyone for a great year and wish everyone a wonderful and happy and healthy holiday season. Uh, I won't see you in two weeks because it will be watching our own sun be buckled into the National Honor Society of Decisions. So I will let it open, thank you, and everyone have a great holiday season. I'll see you after New Year.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Happy holidays. Thank you for everything, guys, and great year, and we will miss you in two weeks in the reorganization. But at the very beginning, we asked Mr. Brown to join us.
Mr. Brown, so is it Mr. Reddick who's ready to be sworn in? Want to come up here or do you think? Make sure that I saw that. Happy, thank you.
Thanks, everyone, take care, have a good one.
You just talked me square, you just told me you'd give her a stat, that would be the truth, the whole thing, nothing but truth. Name and address for the record. Can you be sure that they're sworn in?
I don't have to watch the video, it's the key what you say. That's fine, we heard that, from now on, you won't want to hear anything. This is ready, floor is yours.
Okay, what we're here for tonight is to, with the planning board, to consider a revised redevelopment plan for the range three properties. One step that we would like to take prior to that, which is, and trade out the redevelopment all that, have a 40A colon 12A dash 7E. There's a requirement that prior to the adoption of redevelopment plan, revision or amendment thereto, planning board shall transmit to the governing body with a 45 days effective referral a report containing recommendations concerning redevelopment plan. This report shall include any identification of any provisions in the proposed redevelopment plan which are inconsistent with the master plan and recommendations concerning the inconsistencies and any of the matters that the board deemed appropriate. So what I have handed out earlier this evening was a letter, a preface letter from Harvard Consultants, which I prepared, dated September 2012. And what I would like to do is to summarize this report and recommend that, including that the board adopts this report as an official written recommendation to the governing body on the revised range redevelopment plan. The report basically says that the wonderful objectives of the land use plan, health and master plan adopted by the city was in training order and on October 2005 was a continued effort to redevelop and redevelop areas. The land use plan element, I'm sorry, the land use plan element of the master plan identified a number of redevelopment plans that had been adopted by the planning board as well as a list of other potential redevelopment areas. As the board did aware, the original, the master plan was adopted back in 2005. The same plan board adopted a master plan reexamination report dated August 2008. In that August 2008 reexamination report, the net, the report identified the ranked properties as an area that should be recommended as an area of redevelopment and supported the adoption of redevelopment and for those properties. However, as of this date, the planning board is not taking any action to amend the master plan and specifically include the range for redevelopment plan as applicable zoning regulations for a certain area of redevelopment. Therefore, in order for the proposal to revise the rank redevelopment plan to exist with the goals and objectives of the land use element, the city master plan specifically includes with NJSA 40A colon 12A hyphen 77B is our offices, specific recommendations to the planning board that the planning board adopted a letter serving to bring recommendations to the city council. And what this report conclude will basically clean up an area of the planning documents between the master plan is adopted back in 2005 and wherever you are today is reconciling these planning documents for the city council to reconsider the dot. So in summary, that reading entire letter of record, that is our recommendations to the planning board as a step that should be taken prior to my next step of me to discuss the revisions to the redevelopment plan.
So at this point in time, we need to take the vote on this, so somebody needs to move this letter.
I need to leave.
By Commissioner Tuller, seconded by Vice Chairman Ross. This is the regulation, as Professor Alkon, a part of the, please, for roll.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Commissioner Crumel.
Aye.
Commissioner Crumel.
Aye.
Commissioner Melch.
Aye.
Secretary Urban.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Vice President Ross.
Aye.
Commissioner Gudis.
Aye.
Chairman pass.
Aye. Michael, continue.
Thank you, the second phase of my recommendations tonight is to discuss the revisions to the rank redevelopment plan and why it's important to adopt a revised plan. And what I'd like to do is just highlight some of the changes. If the board remembers back from the original study, the original plan that adopted for these, for these properties, the intent was for partial proportion of the development was to utilize some of the existing buildings that was on Newark Avenue and those would be reutilized, reconstructed, but the existing setbacks and existing structures for most parts were remained, those would be the residential units. The commercial components of redevelopment plan would be separated on the same properties. As we're all aware, not too long ago, there was a significant fire on this property which damaged those buildings and had resulted in a revised study that was done and approved by this board and sent back to council. And since the changes on the property due to fire damage to the buildings, the fact that they're going to be demolished and not in a condition that they can be regularly repaired and used for residential apartment use, we have prepared for the planning board a revised redevelopment plan. And the specific changes, major changes that I would like to point to the members is what's being proposed now is more of a shared approach. There's still the same permitted principal uses, permitted principal uses remain the same, which is all principal uses to the R.C. Regional Commercial Zone District and which is item number one, reading from page 12 of the revised redevelopment plan. And residential accommodations being number two, medical offices, restaurants, and professional offices. All of these units, all of these uses were and are in the original redevelopment plan adopted by, prepared by the board and adopted by council. These have not changed. But the changes, one of the changes are is that there's going to be a shared approach between commercial and residential uses. Previously, there were building separations between the two uses. There were minimum building setback requirements. Basically, we're keeping residential separate public commercial uses and now there's going to be more of a shared approach on property. Uh, we have the overall density has not changed, the overall maximum amount of square footage, per square footage has not changed. But the shared approach is also going to be part of shared parking approach for the use of the proposed parking deck, which has been included as permitted accessory structure in the revised plan. Uh, and then obviously, the biggest part is the whole redevelopment plan encouraged and even discussed utilizing the existing building line along Newark Avenue as the structure, as the building setback, that building was remaining to be reutilized upon resident units. That, since that has changed and now on the site, the plan reflects that under item number seven, the minimum building setback of 10 feet, 75, 3 yards. The front yard setback of all buildings along Newark Avenue shall be 18 feet now, whereas previously was the prevailing front yard setback of existing buildings. That summarizes briefly the recommended changes. Uh, as far as the shared approach with the parking, with the provision where the parking is to be reviewed by the board professional, we do it approved by the board professionals and there's going to be a shared parking approach between the commercial and the residential uses. Any questions?
Commissioners, members, commissioners, any questions? Mr. Reddick, on my presentation?
I do.
Yes?
Does that mean, that means that the site, it would be exempt from the site?
I'm sorry, I can hear you.
Does that mean the exempt from the site?
No, just like with any redevelopment, any other redevelopment plan, should the, what we're being asked to do tonight by council is to review and provide recommendations of this redevelopment plan and write it back to council. Should council adopt the redevelopment plan by ordinance at subsequent hearing, that becomes the new design controls, the new overlay zone for this property. What happens next will be applicants who choose to commit to preliminary, preliminary final site kind of application, they will make a participation part of this board and this board will review that site and stay consistent with redevelopment plans. This board will, there's no planning, there's no development plan being approved tonight, this is just setting revised redevelopment.
This is similar to what we've done with this board, maybe, maybe. This is similar to what we've done with this board many, many times. We're laying overlay in the area now, hoping when the city council approves this, some developer will come forward with a plan, which we will look at on its merits based on this overlay.
So this board will speed this application again and give the details.
That is all your question, commissioner. Any other questions, any other commissioners? Is there any elected official in the audience who has any comments regarding this application? So please come forward.
Commissioner Robinson, testimony or name and address, please.
One fifteen Parker Road in Elizabethan. Good evening, chairman, council commissioners. I just wanted to come here tonight to simply because of course the redevelopment plan for this brand project is in my ward. And besides, that means a lot to me personally to go on Sheridan Avenue and going to school around the bars and smelling the cookies as I walk to the school. But my major concern, a couple things, one is, and of course, all of you, you sit in honor of the experts and I know you're going to review everything as we proceed, but it's hard for me to see the shared use of the parking space. I know that they're looking at doing two phases, the first phase, two box retail stores.
More than we do.
Okay. You haven't seen anything, okay. And I just, I just know too, I know as mentioned, of course, a fire that hurt caused a lot of damage to the building. But there's a lot of the building that, in my opinion, not a mess, but it seems to be structurally fine and completely stable. And seeing the original plans that were taking place, it was a beautiful project. And my biggest thing is that I just want to make sure that the transit village component of wanting to create that aspect of that area would be the forefront. I just think it's a big gem in the community. And I'm just concerned from what I'm hearing, and of course, we'll see more as we proceed, that what they're proposing might seem okay at first, but the reality is, just for all of us to know that, and it's difficult, of course, you haven't seen some of the things up to this moment, but I'm just concerned that the whole transit village, job component for a city is being threatened, even though it seems like it's being presented in one way or another. But we'll see more as we proceed. Also, the whole shared parking, I see that as a concern because when it comes to, if you're going to have a residential component and you have two or a repo, you have retail, at the same time, you have trucks driving in and out with residential houses, old townhouses or whatever it might be in the area as well. So it's just hard for me to see it as for the previous plans, it was clearly there was a distinction between the residential and the commercial. And that's the major thing. And I'll, like Arnold Shaw said, I'll be back.
And just as a comment, you've seen more of it than we have. There is a concept plan that has been offered to be presented before this board, but we've chosen not to see that concept plan until council acts on the overlay. It makes no sense to look at a concept plan and leave council's role over the overlay. So what we need to do today is to get this thing sent up to you guys, the council, and hopefully we'll act on it before the end of the year and send it back to us and then we'll proceed down the road. And yes, I agree with you, the original plans were beautiful plans, but I believe from what I've observed in the fire department, that building is inherently unsafe. There is no strength system in that building anymore. It is cost prohibitive to try to rebuild once the damage. While it looks like a very sturdy building, I wouldn't want to have it go in there.
No, of course, no, and I appreciate you sharing those details.
But you have advantage over us right now because you've obviously seen something that we haven't seen yet.
Thank you, chairman. And just wanted to say that it is on the agenda for this Tuesday in city council, so what's the latest to proceed?
Well, so we'll send it up to you, hopefully before the end of the evening.
Sounds great. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Is there anyone else in the audience who has any comments regarding this application? So please come forward. Or any questions, Mr. President, that's the, yeah, that's the person major. Seeing none, may I have a motion to move this council's protection? Council, council made a motion, saying. Going to him, okay, so we'll say that. Commissioner Carvalho made a motion. She meant that to the vice, vice chairman, Mr. Dawson. The fire has just crossed the road. The council brought it, good job, America. Aye, aye, aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez, I'm Commissioner Carvalho. I'm Commissioner Mellis.
Aye.
Commissioner, sorry, Secretary Urban. Commissioner Chauvin.
Aye.
Vice chairman Roll. Commissioner Gonzalez, chairman Haas.
Just reminding all of you that we'll proceed to the organization on the twentieth of this month and we wish you all a happy and healthy holiday season and a happy new year. And this year will end January, January the third for our next meeting. Here, here. Motion, sir, so move.